Good morning, council members.
Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, November 12th, 2003. We are meeting in John F. Raro Chambers of City Hall. I'd like to welcome all the members of the public and our viewers on Channel 35, LA City View. We also have this broadcast on telephone, on City Phone, for anybody who wants to be listening in. You can always call in and listen to that. We currently have nine members and we're just one shy of a quorum. So if Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, or Mr. Villarreal are in the building, we would love for them to join us. In the meantime, we have a special presentation. And I would like to recognize Councilmember Tony Cardenas for this presentation at this time.
Good morning, council members and angelinos. I'd like to take a few minutes to introduce a dignitary who's visiting our city today, and we're honoring him. Governor Tomas Yarrington from Tamaulipas, Mexico. And I'll read a few facts about this great governor and about his And I'll read a few facts about this great governor and about his great state. On February 5th, 1999, Tomas Yarrington took office as governor of Tamaulipas, pledging to make education the priority of priorities, and his state a leading partner in the region's economic development. For those of you that are unfamiliar with Tamaulipas, Mexico, it is Mexico's most northeastern state, sharing 222 miles bordering the United States, and has 252 miles along the coastline of the Gulf of Mexico. Tamaulipas is one of the leading destinations for foreign investment in Mexico. In 2001, the foreign direct investment reached $480 million, the fifth-highest level among the country's 32 states of Mexico. It is home to one of the world's most dynamic international and commercial borders. Some two-thirds of all U.S.-Mexico trade originates in a transit through the border states of Tamaulipas. Governor Yarrington has ensured that Tamaulipas builds on its strengths in the global economy. Business-friendly reforms, economic diversification, government modernization, and public investment in the infrastructure and education have helped make Tamaulipas one of Mexico's most exciting success stories. Tamaulipas, now under the leadership of Tomas Yarrington, is now one of the highest-ranked states in the United States of Mexico in many, many categories when it comes to economics, when it comes to education, when it comes to progress of infrastructure. With that, I'd like to introduce to you someone who's not a stranger to the city of Los Angeles. He studied here at our famous University of Southern California, where he earned his master's degree in the mid-1980s, the governor of Tamaulipas, Mexico, Tomas Yarrington.
I am very glad to be here in Los Angeles, and honored to have this chance to speak briefly to the city council of these great metropolis. My warmest thanks to the council, and particularly to my host, Tony Cardenas. Here in L.A., the ties that bind the United States and Mexico are especially strong. I know this from personal experience, as I lived and studied here in Los Angeles before embarking on my public service in Mexico. Certainly, at a time when immigration issues are once again moving to the top of the bilateral agenda, Los Angeles, more than any other city, illustrates the importance to both the U.S. and Mexico of family and economic ties that justify a determined effort by policymakers to bridge the wide gap between the current legal framework for migrant labor and economic reality. Though my state is at the other end of the U.S.-Mexico border, as the governor of a large Mexican border state, I believe in reaching out wherever good opportunities exist to pursue stronger regional cooperation and understanding for the good of all the people of the U.S.-Mexico border region. The first decade of NAFTA has seen a truly historic shift in Mexico's economic potential, and this is even more true for the state of Tamaulipas. We have been at the center of the dramatic increase in U.S.-Mexico trade and cross-border investment, and at the center as well of the broad social and cultural integration process that has been weaving the United States and Mexico into a partnership that is greater than the sum of its parts. As Tamaulipas governor for the past five years, I have concentrated on helping my fellow citizens embrace the opportunities offered by globalization. By expanding education and health programs, investing heavily in roads and highways, modernizing the state's government bureaucracy, and making it easier for business to operate in the state, we have come a long way. Tamaulipas is now rated as having one of the highest-quality business environments among Mexico's states, and in spite of a very tough economic environment, we have managed to generate more than 200,000 new jobs in our state during the past five years. I greatly appreciate the welcome I have received here today, and I look forward to deepening my understanding of this great American city. I also invite you all to come visit me in Tamaulipas. We share an interest in expanding the horizons of the bilateral relationship. Indeed, Tamaulipas and California have a lot to offer each other as NAFTA enters its second decade. Thank you again for the warm welcome and for your expertise and commitment to serving so many of your citizens whose interests transcend the border and challenge us to find new ways to work together.
With that, I'd like to present Governor Tomas Yarrington with this certificate of welcome to the city of Los Angeles, and it reads, "On the occasion of your visit to El Pueblo, nuestra señora, la reina de Los Angeles." And by the way, the governor does speak Spanish as well. Gracias, thank you.
I'd like to recognize, while we're taking those pictures, Councilmember Ed Reyes to say a few comments as well, Governor. And Mr. Reyes does speak English, too. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, LeBange, Ludo, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarreal, Sainz, Padilla, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Being the first Tuesday, colleagues, we are going to have a flag salute. If I could ask everybody to please stand. And I know she's talking to the guards, but Ms. Liz Saldivar, could I call on you, please, to do the flag salute this morning?
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Saldivar. Next item of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Sainz moves. Mr. Parks seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves, and Mr. LeBange seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, items 1 through 40 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 1 is a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk and go through the rest of the agenda?
Yes, let's hold that on the desk, please.
Item number 6, the action of last week was to withhold on the ordinance and have that on today's agenda and continue that matter to November 18th.
Okay, if there's no objection, we will continue item 6 till November 18th, colleagues.
And also on item number 39, a request from Councilmember Han to receive and file that matter.
Okay, if there's no objection, colleagues, item 39 will be received and filed.
And that leaves the balance of the items. I believe there is also a request on item number 40 to refer that to Public Safety Committee.
That is correct. If there's no objection to that, colleagues as well, we will refer item 40 to Public Safety Committee. Okay? Any specials, colleagues? 24?
26, please.
26, Mr. Reyes.
And number 3.
And number 3 for Mr. Reyes. Mr. Parks?
12, 21, 25, 27.
All right, Mr. Parks, and Mr. LeBange.
I just want to say 21 again.
21, twice. So it will definitely be called very extra-special today. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, if we can open--
Excuse me, Mr. President. Was number 24 called special? I believe that was, but--
Was-- Mr. Parks, was 24 one of the ones he called special? Or Mr. Sainz? Mr. Sainz called 24 special. Okay. Can we please open the roll? Oh, sorry, Mr. Cardenas?
Is it appropriate at this time to announce continuation of item 15 for a week?
Sure. If you'd like to continue item 15 for one week, without objection, colleagues? Continue item 15 for one week, if there's no objection. This is just 15. We've already done 6.
Mr. President, for clarification, the items now called special were items 3, 12, 21, 24, 25, and 26.
Colleagues, any specials that have not been covered by that? That was 3, 12, 21, 24, and 26. Okay, that looks like those are the specials. If we can open the roll on the balance of the items, please? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved.
And the ordinances will go over for one week, and that would be November 19th.
Great. No fourth with on the ordinances because they're carried over for one week. Next batch of items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items number 41 through 77, and those have not had public hearing. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, colleagues. Any specials for items 44 to 77?
And there are commissioners on 41, 42, 43, and 44. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold those on the desk as well.
And that would be then items 45 through 77 are before council.
If we can do 29 fourth with as well. Any specials, colleagues?
Number 66, we have a substitute motion being circulated that alters the cost.
Okay, it's a technical amendment?
Technical amendment, $10,000 to $20,000.
Okay. We'll take that up, then. If nobody wants to speak on that as special, we'll make sure that's included. Any other specials, colleagues? Okay. Seeing none, let us take up those items, including 66 as amended. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved as well.
And then the ordinance on item number 45 will also go over for one week.
Okay, 45 will be carried over.
The next items, Mr. President, are closed session, items 78, 79, and 80. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let us hold those on the desk, though. I understand there's been a request to continue item 79 until 11/18, till the 18th. Is that correct?
Request from Ms. Misakowski, who's out of town, and would like to be here for the discussion.
All right. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing until the 18th, item 79? Okay, seeing none, let's continue that, and let's hold the others on the desk, please.
And that would be, then council would go back to the items called special, and then the first item called special was commissioner on item number 1. Public hearing has been held in committee, and that's confirmation of Mr. Wade Hunter to the Environmental Affairs Commission.
Okay, Mr. Hunter, if you'd like to come forward. Welcome, and thank you for putting yourself forward for service. Colleagues, we have Mr. Hunter before us. I'd like to recognize at this time, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I've had the opportunity to work with Wade Hunter for about 20 years now in community activities, and he's the kind of commissioner that we all want. One of those people that works in the community on a myriad of events and activities, most importantly, helps form the neighborhood council in Grande Hills North, and is a member of the board there. Just one of those people that you see at community events, that you want on community commissions, and I thank the mayor for helping us getting Mr. Hunter here today. He'll make a great commissioner. He is very, very aware of environmental issues. He was a member of the mayor's landfill oversight committee that just came out with a report last week, so he has a real grasp of the issues that will be before the commission, and I think he'll make a great commissioner, and I wholeheartedly urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Any other colleagues wishing to be heard? I can certainly reflect that the Environmental Quality Committee unanimously supported this. So if there's no further objection, would you like to say anything to the council, Mr. Hunter?
I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to serve. I really am interested in environmental issues and making sure that the people of Los Angeles are well-served. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, colleagues, we have this nomination before us. Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations, Mr. Hunter. Now commissioner of the city of Los Angeles. That item is approved. If we can take the next, if we can actually jump forward to the next commission appointment.
The next commission appointments would be items 41, 42, and 43, and those are all reappointments to the Quality and Productivity Commission. Ms. Diane Corral, Ms. Ann Jackson, and Mr. An Trong. And public, excuse me, committee waived consideration. Public hearing has not been held.
Okay, great. Colleagues, we have these items before us. Anybody wishing to be heard? Councilmember Grohl.
Thank you so much, and I'm glad to be speaking in support of our individuals who are being appointed to the Quality and Productivity Commission. We work very closely with our Audits and Government Efficiency Committee, and we had a chance the other day, Anna and I had a chance to meet and talk about some of the ideas, and what I found is, when you start talking about efficiency, surprisingly, people's eyes do light up, and we were, we probably spent hours doing that. And I also want to comment, Diane Corral, who is not here today, who is a constituent of mine, excuse me, had childcare issues this morning, so she could not be here, but is a really individual who, I believe, has been a true, committed public servant for us in as neighborhood council and in her neighborhood association. So I wanted to say a few words to her, about her as well, and Anna, I look forward to working with you in this new appointment, or appointment to the commission--
Reappointment.
Reappointment, excuse me. Reappointment. But we're going to do great things in the city of Los Angeles, and just want you to know that all of us care about your commission and the ideas that come out of it. No ideas too small, no ideas too ridiculous, on how we can make Los Angeles a much more productive and efficient city. So thank you for your commitment and your time that you've already spent on the commission, and look forward to more hours in the day that you can spend on our Quality and Productivity Commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grohl. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Sainz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well-stated, Councilmember Wendy Grohl. Quality and productivity, it's close and near to the taxpayers' hearts, as we know. And if we don't have the quality, we don't have the productivity, we have problems. We know that our comptroller, Laura Chick, does a tremendous job with audits, and if we can work together with quality, productivity, and with the audits and streamline the operation-- I know recently we had a debate in here about the Convention Center and how the taxpayers are being charged an exorbitant rate when we sponsor an event at the Convention Center. That, to me, comes under productivity, the tax dollars, the contracts that we administer, the exclusive contracts of vendors throughout the city, and not giving a break to the taxpayers when an event is held at a location. I know, Ann, your previous experience at the Convention Center, and your dedication to the people of Los Angeles, and how you strive forward with this commission. And I still think there are some vacancies on this commission, which we need to fill so we'll have the quorum, so you can make things happen as we want to have happen. And, sir, I welcome you to that. I see by your ID, you're also a city employee. What department do you work for?
Oh, no, this is the commission--
Oh, that's the commission ID. Oh, I thought you were an employee with-- So you're already a commissioner?
Yes.
Well, get out of here. Go to work. So you're for reappointment?
Yes.
Okay, so both of you for your appointment. I know that we will get those other positions filled. It's critical in this hard economic time, and we don't know what's going to happen with the budgets and the concerns and the demands, and we can always stretch that dollar a little farther, and the more we stretch it, the more benefit to the taxpayers. So your commission is vitally important. Sometimes people take it for granted, don't think it's really important, significant, but it's critically important. And Councilmember Grohl and I discussed that yesterday, about the significance and the importance as we come up with these issues. How do we save money? How do we stretch those dollars? How do we give those services to people? So it's a very, very important commission and a very important function from city government. So I invite you both to be hard chargers in that. And I know that your dedication, Ann, because I know Ann personally and her husband, and we've known each other, and she's a constituent. So that even makes it better, she's a constituent in the third district. To save the dollars for the people in San Fernando Valley, they're always saying, "We don't get our fair share." So welcome both to, back to the city family, and I wish you well on that commission, and I will be here to help you and Wendy on that particular commission, because, again, it's very, very critically important. Thank you for serving.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sainz, and thank you, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Trong, for putting yourselves forward. Would you like to say anything to the council at this time?
I'll just, I look forward to continuing my service and recognizing the innovations of the city staff and delivering services to the residents of Los Angeles in the best way possible.
Thank you.
I think we have a good group of folks, and I think in the next couple of years, this commission's going to be very challenged in terms of the budget crisis, and we look forward to really trying to address those concerns.
We need you now more than ever. So with that, if we can open the roll on the three nominees before us. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Congratulations on your reappointments.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your service. Before we go on to the last commission appointment, as long as we have 12 council members, colleagues who'd like to reconsider the ordinances to pass those, Madam Clerk, if we can please reconsider those?
And those were items 2, 4, 5, and 45.
Okay, 2, 5, sorry, 2, 4, 5, and 45, colleagues, that we're reconsidering. We voted on once, but now with 12 members, we can pass it today. So if we can please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those ordinances are approved. Thank you. If we can take up item 44 now.
Next item then, Mr. President, is item number 44, and that's confirmation of Ms. Clara Um to the Commission on the Status of Women, and committee waived consideration. Public hearing has not been held.
Welcome, Ms. Um. Would you like to say anything to the council?
Good morning. It's nice to be here.
Great. Colleagues, anybody wishing to be heard on this nomination? If not, we'll make this easy. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Congratulations. You are now commissioner of the city of Los Angeles, and we look forward to your service on the commission. Thank you very much.
That was almost too easy.
I know. Don't worry, the service will be more difficult than that.
I'm sure it will.
Thanks very much for your service. Next order of business, please.
Item number 3 was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
All right, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. If you don't mind, I called 3 and 26 special. In my mind, they're both related in that we're issuing bonds for a very-- In my mind, they're both related in that we're issuing bonds for very much needed equipment that deals with our sanitation, and as we talk about this investment, we're talking about, and colleagues, I'm addressing you, because I need us to understand that, and I just want to share this with you, that we have an opportunity here, we work, when we look at our facilities, where these new upgraded trucks, vehicles will be coming through our neighborhoods, we will be upgrading different plants throughout the city. I'd like for us to consider that when we look at these plants, that we understand their locations, where they're located, how they're being developed, I know in District One and Fourteen, we have some very great opportunities in assessing where these can go, so that we can complement further the work we're trying to do along the river. We look at many of our yards and many of our facilities, they are in locations that were put there because of the rail lines and where the rail yards were connected with our industrial zones. We no longer are tied to that kind of technology, we're no longer tied to that system, so our ability to move these plants and facilities is key. When we're looking at these kinds of investments, let's consider where they can go. So the reason why I call this special is so that those of you who are listening will understand that we have an ability to move some of these projects in a manner where we can leverage our locations. For example, in District Fourteen, you have locations that if we were to consolidate our parking requirements for various departments into one site, we can open up a lot of land for revenue-generating kind of activities along the river, or we can open up pocket parks. There are different ways that we can use our land that the city controls that generates the revenue. A few weeks ago, we talked about how do we make this pie bigger? These are the key steps. We are at a beginning point in which these decisions are being made, if we proceed with these revenue bonds, the next question becomes, where are the facilities? Where will the improvements occur? Can we get other facilities to group into one facility, open up space and land for revenue-generating activity and/or community benefits? So colleagues, I thank you for your attention, and hopefully we can move forward in a manner that takes advantage of these revenue bonds in the most effective way possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. I'd like to recognize Councilman Cardenas, and then Mr. Parks.
I'd just like to make sure I understood you correctly, Councilman Reyes, you're talking about an issue that has to do with better planning, more efficient land use, and greater opportunity for appropriate facilities that are needed in our various communities, is that what you're talking about?
Bottom line.
Absolutely, I think that makes sense. I think you're sharing a lot of the frustration that the northeast San Fernando Valley shares with the previous lack of planning, or planning, whatever you want to call it, and the concentration of a lot of businesses that are either inefficient and/or environmentally impacting the surrounding community, and I think it is time that the city of Los Angeles actually takes a look at these environmental injustices, and also look at what other cities do very well, in some cases, much better than us, is they have a much better, efficient use of their planning and their land use, which creates more revenue, and at the same time, many more facilities like pocket parks and other facilities that the community is in dire need of.
One of the key factors here is getting the respective departments to coordinate with each other, General Services, along with Department of Transportation, Department of Sanitation, Public Works, and can we get them to look at the same area they occupy, where we can stack parking, for example, and open up space so that we can do something better for the community, and at the same time, take advantage of these new technologies. So I'm just laying that out on the table, since we're at that discussion point, we're passing a special revenue bond for this new technology, why not begin that assessment in a respective district where these facilities do exist?
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Reyes, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Parks at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair, could I have the staff come out upon the, just had a couple of questions to ask on three and twenty-six? Thank you. I think it is so important what Mr. Reyes has talked about on this issue of the better planning, better land usage, but another issue that I've been concerned with in, I've been discussing with the CAO.
We can just methodologically take up item twenty-six at the same time, since both are interrelated, just for the agenda?
Yeah, three and twenty-six.
Great.
But the real issue I wanted to talk about is the whole area of the sale of the bonds, and I know that we've had a historical history in the city of competitive bidding, and talking to a number of people in the industry, they tell us that we're not getting the full range of support from the bond industry by not looking at least at some of these bond sales as it relates to negotiate it, and the other issue is whether we are exhausting the issue of the bond industry locally. I've seen some of our bond measures in which we've sent as much as three million dollars to New York for a bond service as it relates to the sale of bonds. We have local companies that do that, and I just want to see if we're taking into full consideration this issue of negotiated versus competitive, and also local bond agents versus those that reside outside of the city or the state.
At the present time, we, bonds of this type, we issue on a comparative basis. The city's current debt policy speaks to the comparative process unless there's a compelling reason that would benefit the city to have a negotiated sale. Our financial advisors have consistently recommended the comparative process, but we've also looked at the merits of a negotiated process, and I've talked to Councilman Parks about, on a go-forward basis, when we have, maybe not for some of these big issues, but for one of our smaller issues, to look at the option of going either competitive or negotiated. What we need, though, is, I think before we do that, I'd rather have a very specific discussion with your council, or maybe first with Budget and Finance, on the pros and cons of competitive versus negotiated sales, and we've asked our financial advisor to provide some information on some, on both the pros and cons, on the benefits, because at this point in time, they're telling us we can get the best rate if we go on a comparative basis. Now with respect to using either local firms or firms that are located somewhere other than the city, like Washington DC or New York, when you go on a comparative, when you issue bonds on a comparative basis, it leaves us little option to restrict that sale to only the local firms, it's whomever will respond to our electronic competitive bid process.
I understand, one of the things, I think the ward in power, and I see Ms. Yancey's here, Ward in Power recently did about a billion dollars in bonds on negotiated, and I think in following that suit, that they got, at least from my understanding, what they believed not only were better rates, but they also believed that they got more of an involvement by the bond agent in helping them service their debt, where in competitive, people come in on a certain day with the best bid, and basically, they get to sell the bonds. I understand also that in the large bond sales, that only a percentage are sold by the winning bid, we then designate other companies to sell the other portion, so in effect, we are designating some companies, even though we call it a competitive bid, and I'd like us to keep looking at where we can use negotiated bid, and particularly in light of companies that we can generate and stimulate our own economy by spending those several thousands and millions of dollars in our local economy, with companies that are in the city, in the county, or at minimum, in the state of California.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Mr. Reyes, for a second time.
I just want to take advantage of the fact that we have personnel putting this together. The refuse collection districts, we have so many zip codes in each respective area. These bonds are to go towards vehicles, am I correct?
Part of the bond is correct, used to buy sixty clean-fueled, do-it-fuel vehicles, refuse vehicles.
And part of that process is to accommodate these vehicles by investing in potential sites where they can be placed, correct?
That's correct.
How many of these sites have already been planned and/or invested on to accept vehicles?
As of today, we have two sites in the valley, one is in East Valley, which, and the second one will be coming online in the end of this month, early December, in the West Valley area, and this site we are requesting in this bond will be in the South LA, and will be serving several council districts in this area.
Now, will there be one in North Central?
Yes, in a future bond will be one for North Central.
So are you aware of our ability to interface with the decision-making process at the plant level, can we still look at opportunities in ways in which we can look at the best-case scenario for dealing with these new machines?
That's correct, Councilman, we have spoken to some of the staff, and the reason we've done it this way is because we were directed by council to old vehicles that are going to Sunshine Canyon has to be clean fuel, so we'll put the two first LNG facilities in the valley, and as the plan progresses, it spreads throughout the city, but we're working with your, we'll talk to your staff about implementing it in North Central.
I'd like to see the action plan that you're putting together for North Central to understand, before you start making huge investments in the various sites, and that impacts my district, I'd like to understand where our opportunities lie for the different kinds of approaches that maximize the use of our space, especially since we are in places like in my district, we have four or five departments concentrated in one area, taking up very valuable industrial zone, and looking at ways to maximize that opportunity, if we're going to invest that kind of money in these plants.
You know, excuse me, on that particular subject, our general manager of General Services has, or is in the process of developing information which will show that our current diesel trucks with the particulate traps and the low-emission diesel fuel are actually burning cleaner than some of these alternate-fuel vehicles, and has presented, consistently presented the same information to the AQMD to show that within time, after you use alternate-fuel vehicle for several months, they actually burn dirtier than our current diesel trucks. And so we asked them to provide some information to this council to show that the amount of money we're investing in this alternate-fuel program is actually resulting in a vehicle that is more detrimental to the environment than our current trucks, because they've modified our current trucks, again, with the particulate traps and using the low sulfur emission fuel, that actually burn cleaner. It's a very, very complicated process.
It is, and what I'm trying to do, Mr. Fujioka, is that I have plants that were designed back in the forties, fifties, and sixties, that were designed to sustain a work program where I had no less than six, seven thousand people per square mile. I now have twenty-five, thirty thousand people per square mile.
I understand.
So my ability to use my space effectively is crucial. If I'm in a position where we can economically and efficiently collapse and combine facilities that are taking advantage of current technology, it opens up space for me to use along the river, along Lincoln Heights, I literally have twenty-five thousand per square mile, like three, four blocks away from the facilities, that right now I have wide, open spaces in terms of parking, and no one's using them. There's something wrong with this picture when we need to take advantage of these opportunities and be, again, strategic in how we move forward and collapse our investments in such a way where we get the greatest return.
What I wanted to do was encourage the council to provide a formal direction or request to General Services and our Bureau of Sanitation, report back on that subject, but just not on the effective use of space, but also on this whole alternate-fuel program.
Well, I feel emotion coming on, so.
Great, that'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Mr. Fujioka, now that we opened up the issue of bonds and going out to, putting bonds out there, when it comes to competitive versus negotiated, on the surface, I think that most Americans, most Angelinos would say, well, we've got to go competitive, but it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, many of the jurisdictions around this country have been successfully going to a negotiated program within their cities, and I've actually been willing to say that it has served them well, not only with process, but it has served them well when it comes to possibly getting a better rate on the bonds, and also including more minority participation in those bonds, et cetera, et cetera. Is that correct, or where are we going here with the city of Los Angeles, and why do we tend to concentrate on competitive rather than negotiated?
We thought that the competitive process would give us the best results. We've worked with our financial advisors and other bond council and those in the bond community on a consistent basis to obtain the best advice on how we should structure our bond sales. This has been an issue that's been, is, has, where our Chair of Budget and Finance, Councilman Parks, is very, very interested in, and yet, I know that, I do know that other jurisdictions have looked at negotiated sales and felt that that was the best, was the best process and would result in the, in the best rates for that particular jurisdiction, but yet, we still have our financial advisors saying the competitive process is, and will result in the best rates for your bond sales, but I've talked tomorrow about, we're going to have a meeting with our own bond council and city attorney and our financial advisors to look at how we can structure a deal that could, I think it's time, we maybe, we need to test the negotiated process and see what benefits it results, if we have the option to cancel it at the appropriate point in time, if we feel it's not in fact giving us the best rates. But to be candid, I still believe the competitive process will serve the city best. We have received some outstanding rates in the past year, we've saved, we've refinanced, you know, a number of our bonds and saved millions and millions of dollars in this past year, but if it's a world this council, you'd like us to try a negotiated sale, we will do that.
You mean negotiated sale will not allow us to refinance later?
No, 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 it's not, that's not my point, I'm just saying that we feel the competitive process will result in the best rates, and that's been the consistent advice of both our financial advisors and our bond council. If, if you would like us to structure a negotiated sale and test that, that portion of the market, and if that's the direction of this council, we will try that, but with our experience and based on the advice from a number of people in the bond industry, we feel the competitive process is still the best process.
Well, the thing that strikes me as odd is, the research that I've done, more and more jurisdictions around the country are going to negotiate it almost exclusively, yet the city of Los Angeles seems to be remaining in the opposite direction. We seem to be a dinosaur in this industry, we seem to be a dinosaur on the subject matter within the industry when it comes to negotiated versus competitive, and one of the things, the first time I heard it, the first thing I said without knowing, in my ignorance, I said, well, competitive is the way to go, but now that I've looked into it, looked into it further, it appears that negotiated seems to be the most fair way to do it, and it seems to be the most economical way, and it does give you, as a city, many more options. For example, when it comes to competitive, it's my understanding, is when they compete and you open up those envelopes and you give them that bid, then they are required to give you the rate that they quoted you on, because, that everybody may have quoted you on, they got you the best rate and other terms, and what happens is, when it comes to negotiated, if the market is improving, they can get you a better rate, and they are obligated to get you a better rate, where on the other hand, on the competitive, you are obligated to take the bad rate, if in fact it's a bad rate. Is that the case? All I'm saying is, I'm looking into this, you perhaps know a lot more about it than I do, I just wanted to take a minute or two to try to clarify this now that the subject matter came up.
Yes, well, our competitive process is done electronically, and it's done on a real-time basis, where we're linked to, via the computer and internet, to a number of major companies who bid for our, for our bonds. We, because we don't profess to be experts in this field, although we have significant experience in my office on managing your debt and issuing bonds, we hire experts in this field, we call them our financial advisors, we have bond council, we also have ongoing discussions with our rating agencies, and consistently, they've advocated the competitive process and not the negotiated process.
Have they documented that advocacy?
I have to ask you to conclude, Mr. Cardenas.
Well, yes, they have, in fact, we develop a.
All I'd like, Bill, is for you to get me some of that documentation, so I can get their side of the story.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If it's okay with Mr. Parks, then we'll take up both items, I know you'd call twenty-six special, we'll take them up together, is that all right, or do you want to keep twenty-six on the table for any additional comments? Okay, if we can open the roll on those two items, please? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. If we can go forthwith on thirty-five, thirty-six, two, four, five, and forty-five, please, as well. Okay, and next item, please.
Item number twelve was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have the Department of Aging staff, please? Oh, there's no staff. Maybe we could just hold that until we can.
Okay, why don't we hold that and wait till appropriate staff is here for that. Take up the next item, please.
Item number 21 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay. Councilmember Parks.
Different staff.
We have staff available for item 21?
How you doing?
Great. Why don't you come forward to the table? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would just like you to give me a brief explanation of the program, and I had some questions of how the council office gets involved in the committee that you're proposing, how that input comes from the council office, and what criteria we're going to use as relates to selecting sites for this program.
My name is Kent Noyes, and I'm the Director of Engineering and Transmission Distribution. And the program that we're proposing is that we would have a number of criteria, such as reliability, aesthetics, the amount of congestion, the, we would consider other public works projects that would be going on so we could take advantage of working with other organizations. And we would, and we would present a number of alternatives to the city council and ask the city council to make the final decision on the priorities.
Okay. The one thing I was concerned about is, you're going to have a committee. Who's going to be on that committee? Or how does the council get its input?
We would include ourselves working with the CLA's office and any council members who would like to have their deputies work with it. We would also consider input from them.
Okay. The other thing, and when will the criteria be established? What I'm concerned about is in older communities in which, versus newer communities, the newer communities already have a lot of this equipment underground because of the planning and the current building codes. Older communities have been absent with that technology because they were built so much longer ago. How are we going to create criteria that we not come up with a, maybe an even 15, 15 equal shares versus the needs of the communities and where this technology might be a better enhancement for certain poor communities and older communities, which in my judgment, some point in time may even help bring in more development when you've already done some of this new technology and brought this, these utilities underground.
The equity portion of this program certainly is going to be a major issue. We anticipate getting suggestions from each of the council medic offices, and we would take these, apply them to our criteria, and then give a list back to the council for their final decision.
So I think the key is the criteria, because once you create the criteria and we give you suggestions, the criteria's going to drive the program. But if the criteria doesn't take into account older versus newer, how many communities already have the technology in place versus communities that do not have any utilities underground, you're going to create a criteria that, as I've seen in the past, you'll get a share of 1/15th and will move on versus where other, certain communities might be void of this technology and need to be given more consideration. So the criteria, in my judgment, before it's developed and put in concrete, I'd hope that we get input so that we are sure that with this finite resource and technology, we make sure everybody gets maybe not an equal share, but a fair share.
Exactly.
We're very concerned with making it a fair program and certainly would welcome input on what should be part of the criteria.
Okay. And now, who is the contact for the council office? Is that Ms. Yancey?
As always.
All right, okay. Thank you.
And Wendy Yancey, Water &amp; Power. And I will be working directly with yourself, the staff, and/or the actual, the member themselves to look at different areas in your district that are important to you, that you think we'd get the most bang for our buck with this undergrounding program. So I'm really excited about it because we've, we've looked at this for a number of years, and now we're at a point where one of the snags was always whoever received their power, let's say overhead, they would then have to convert the way they receive power to underground. But I'm excited because with this program, we're looking at a turnkey-type operation whereby we will go in and complete the entire process. Whatever portion we're choosing or that we're looking at, we will actually underground the entire portion, including assisting those who, to receive, to convert the way they receive their power. So I'm really excited about it, and I'm looking forward to working with every council office on different areas in their district that we can address.
See, I think we're concerned that it's, what, $50 million? It's a set amount that, once that resource is gone, it doesn't appear to be a cash flow that will continue it. So again, we want to make sure that older communities get, again, a fair share versus an equal share.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, I just want to contest what Councilman Parks just said there. Right now, every wire should be equal in the city. Right now, there should be no wire on Beechwood Canyon any different than a wire off of Century Boulevard, correct?
We'd have to consider the entire program as to the criteria, but we'd welcome input for your criteria, from you, as to what this criteria should be.
Right, right. I just want to say, this is, and I think you're passionate about it too, Bernard, as well. I'm very passionate about overhead wires because I think there's a lost beauty that we don't see. When the city developed, there were some of the first neighborhoods were underground in 1923, 1924. And then as they moved on, what they did is they put the wires in the back of the lots and had housing alleys, et cetera, in that case there. But in certain areas, and you could go down on Trinity Street, Jan, in your district, I know at the school there, I remember I was there with Water &amp; Power. I thought of a New York street because it had that intense, high wire of a lot of power that's on there. I think there should be a value, and I think it should be equal in the sense here, because the wires, wherever they are in the city, all should be equally put under the ground, and we should start to make a difference. I remember the argument in 1978 when Proposition 13 was passed, that took away what was a percentage that Water &amp; Power would set aside for undergrounding, and it's kind of been laid in advance for like 20 years now, 20, 25 years. Now, we're going to go back and start doing this, which is real important. But I think the program has to come up that each part of the city gets its fair share, whether it's the San Fernando Valley on Burbank Boulevard. Water &amp; Power's just out there, did a whole lot of work with the water side, but I thought power could have come in at the same time and put your power lines underground for Burbank. And I'm going to come back to you on that because I think we should work together on those issues. So I think it's a universal problem throughout the city. The only area, Councilman Parks, I think, is the areas that are newly developed post-1970, post-1970, where they're residential districts, where they were fully required to be underground, where there's absolutely no option. So I think we have to look at it carefully so to make sure every part of the city gets its value for this very important program that takes away visual blight. I remember greeting one man once who was from Germany, and he couldn't believe this great city of the West had overhead power lines. But I then did tell him he had a war that wiped out his whole country, that made him rethink how they're going to do their power. And he then smiled when I told him that. I will tell you this as well, too. From a worker's standpoint, you used to be on a pole, right, Wendy?
Well, actually, towers, but.
As a tower. It's, it's more dangerous when it's underground than it is above ground. It's easier to work on it when it's above ground. If there's a flash, they have a lot of space around them. If it's in a vault, it's dangerous because of that. So we have to balance that issue out, too. I just want to thank, and I also want to speak for Councilman Padilla because he brought this motion in. It's a real important issue for undergrounding throughout the world of Los Angeles to beautify it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, from Berlin to Beechwood. Next, Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is of particular instant importance to me as well, and coming from the private sector with investor-owned utilities, undergrounding utilities was a big part of, you know, Edison's capital budget every year, and it was different because, as you know, there really, there was money assessed to each ratepayer specifically for undergrounding utilities. But it was also an opportunity to leverage those dollars with the County of Los Angeles, who also received money for undergrounding utilities. And I was wondering, is there a possibility to partner still in some areas, possibly with the County of Los Angeles, to leverage these dollars?
We have not.
All my time.
We haven't looked at the leveraging with the county, but we have looked at leveraging within the department with the water system, with the Public Works Department, and we hope to be able to combine our projects with some of the other city projects so that we can get more, more work done with our $50 million.
The other question I have is, another way for customers in the investor-owned utility area was, they could assess themselves, and was sort of like, they would take a vote, assess themselves, much like, you know, Business Improvement District or something, and they could actually then raise their own money for their particular neighborhood to underground utilities. Is that also a possibility under this system?
Yes, that program exists now and will continue to be an option in the future.
Again, we want to try to treat everybody equally, some more equally than others. And I also believe we ought to look at, and why I was, when I was in committee, one of the recommendations I made is that we form this task force and get recommendations on the kind of criteria we will use ultimately decide where underground happens first. And I think the older communities certainly, that is part of the criteria. I also think, while it might be more dangerous depending on the work, it's pretty clear that reliability actually is greater underground, when you underground utilities. Is that correct?
Yes, the reliability is greater with underground utilities. We would intend to consider reliability and consider these other issues and list the programs that we would recommend to the council with these advantages, disadvantages, but then let the council make the final decision.
Right, because I would certainly think, some of the older communities, some of the circuits might be older, the ones that continually have issues, I think we would want to look at. And certainly, I think we need to look at, while blight is sort of subjective, I think there are areas of our city that certainly have more blight than other parts of our city, and a lot of that is due to the overhead lines, and I would like for that to be a criteria. The other thing is, of course, cooperating with Public Works on where we're doing major work in the streets in the city. It's not going to make any sense to recommend a particular part of the city to begin undergrounding when in fact, six months later, Public Works is going to be doing a project and digging the street back up. So we've got to cooperate with all the other departments so that we're not digging our streets up one after another. And when we, when we have a major project in this city already, that, you know, that neighborhood might rise to the top for an underground project just because of the cooperation and compatibility. So I think this is a good idea. We should start this as soon as possible. It's a, it's a good program.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Cardenas.
When you have underground power lines, how many times has there been a car accident that has interfered with those lines?
There would not be car accidents resulting from underground.
So if somebody were to jump the curb, they're not going to be running into those power corridors?
That's correct.
Like they do when we have the power poles around our city?
That's correct.
So I think that that is at the core of what one of the reliability issues is when it comes to the maintenance and having to restore those lines when in fact, and these things happen, as we have millions of cars traversing our city every single day, those do occur. I just noticed one across the street from my children's school the other day when I was dropping them off, that somebody over the weekend had run into a power pole, and we had to call DWP out there to go fix it. I agree with this issue, and I agree that we need to go further on this, and the City of Los Angeles needs to work out a way in which, along with DWP, to make sure that we have a much more aggressive component of how we're going to get at having more and more of our corridors underground rather than above ground, because I think it's a quality of life issue on top of that. It's not just about reliability, it's not just about business and economics, it is about all that, but it is about a quality of life. Because some of our more challenged communities do in fact have these in their communities, and it just adds to the chaotic look and just the feeling that nobody cares or that things are in disarray. I've gone through communities that have had this change, and it does make a difference. So I do agree with this for all the reasons, and in addition to that, I think that one of the reasons it makes a lot of sense is to restore some of these communities, to have less of this chaos sticking up through the ground like we do today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That item is noted and filed. Thank you very much. Do we have staff here for number 12 now?
We're going to just ask, we're going to allow that to go to committee in 60 days and comment there.
Okay.
Because there's no staff available, and it would take too much time.
Should I refer to committee?
Yeah.
Okay. That's Arts and Parks Committee? All right. We will, if there's no objection, we will refer item 12 to committee. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 24 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Okay, before Mr. Zine goes, we have one public comment card on this. I'd like to invite Sylvia Lynn Hawkins forward on item number 24. Ms. Hawkins.
Ms. Hawkins.
I would like to pass her after they give their comments. Could I hold back mine?
We're going to take public comment right now, if you don't mind.
Okay, to the next, to the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zine.
Ms. Hawkins passes.
I believe so.
Thank you. A question that I have on this matter, 2,300 electric vehicles in California, 1,600 in Southern California, and we have a fleet of those within the city family of vehicles through Water &amp; Power General Services.
That's correct.
Do you have an approximate number, how many we have?
Lillian Kawasaki, Assistant General Manager, LADWP, we have approximately 300.
Approximately 300 within the city family.
Right.
The concern I have is, I went to an event, and there was a city at, one of our council deputies, and went to a city facility, needed some charge, and it wouldn't work because it was the wrong connection. So I understand that there are three different connections, three different types of connections, and that the industry never had a universal type connection, for whatever reason. And we're now phasing those out, and the automobile industry is phasing those out for the hybrids.
Right, and it has to do with the State Air Resources Board did not continue the mandate, so there are no auto manufacturers now currently making electric vehicles. So we're servicing those that are still, you know, on the road today.
So our fleet of 300 will continue until they're no longer serviceable, I understand?
Right, they're on, they're under lease, and so within the, they should be phased out within the next, I'd say, three and a half years.
Okay. And then the general public, the 2,300 who own these, and the 1,600 in Southern California, if they purchase those, then that will last until no longer serviceable, I understand. Okay, the concern I have is that, and I understand with the discussion we had this morning, is that there is a website that lists the type, the location and type of paddles available for these cars.
That's correct.
And if you own one of those cars, you're probably going to know that. But if you work for the City of Los Angeles and you happen to use one of those cars as a pool vehicle, and you go to a location where it says "electric charging station", it doesn't designate what type of charging station, just charging station, and you go to plug that paddle, and it doesn't work, and now you're out of juice, you've got to call a tow truck and get yourself back. So what I would ask is that we provide for our city fleet, the 300 cars we have in the city fleet, a list of the locations, if it's a type 1, 2, or 3, however they have them labeled, so the individual will know if they're starting to run short, because I've used it a couple of times, and see how that battery starts to drain. So they won't end up breaking down and having to call a tow truck to get towed back to the facility where their vehicles are signed. So I know we're going to, my recommendation is to receive and file, but I would ask that Water &amp; Power and cooperation with General Services has a list in the specific vehicles, the 300 vehicles, so the operator of that vehicle will know, if I run short, this is where I can go to get the proper charging paddle to get the vehicle charged. And the general public can hopefully use the website and obtain, and I think if someone has purchased that vehicle, they're probably going to know where they can get a charge. But the concern I have is that the pool vehicles that we have in use, some of our employees may end up getting stranded, as nearly happened the day that I was witness this situation.
Okay. No, we're happy to make that commitment. For all of the DWP fleet, we will make sure that each vehicle is clearly identified which of the three charging paddles it has, and we will make sure that there's a hard copy in the vehicle so that they'll know. We also coordinate with General Services, and I'm sure they'll be more than cooperative to do the same with the rest of the city fleet.
Okay, that's all I ask. Thank you.
As an EV driver, thank you for your leadership, Mr. Zine, on this issue. Anybody else wishing to be heard on the item? Seeing none, if we can, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That item is noted and filed. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item number 25 was called. Item number 25 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay. We have one public speaker card, Mr. Parks, on this, on item 25. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, if you'd like to come forward on item 25 for us. Item 25, Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins from District Number 7. Item number 25 concerning the environmental quality and waste management of our oil reports, which is, which also is talking about grants for their oil blockage. I'm very concerned concerning the timing that we're living in, and I'm very concerned concerning our energy lever, our water and power lever bills, and also concerning the lossage of energy dealing with cars that now is electric. I'm concerned about also different lands overseas and in the United States of America, that is, there is a great shortage of energy and the saving of energy that we must be concerned about at this time because we're in the middle of a war. I'm very concerned about Department of Water and Power bills, of how high bills are that we are paying as people, as the public, and where if we do come into a shortage, before there's a shortage, we, I think the American people should be warned of the shortage.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. If I can ask you to conclude, please?
Pardon me?
If I can ask you to please conclude your thoughts, thank you.
How many minutes do I have, sir?
You have about 15 seconds left.
Okay, thank you very much. But I do want to speak on the next matter also. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins. We appreciate your testimony. Mr. Parks?
Thank you. May I have the staff come up, please?
Do we have staff available on this item? Is anybody here from Environmental Affairs? If not, we can hold this on the table, Mr. Parks?
Hold it, thank you.
Okay, let us hold this on the table. In the meantime, as we await some staff to come down on this item. Go to the next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, colleagues, now time for public comment. Local government is one of the only levels of government you can come and give public comment. We invite members of the public down here to give their commentary to us. We have two cards today. We'd like to invite Irene Casmer forward, to be followed by Andrew Marticich. Ms. Casmer?
Andrew, why don't you go ahead? And we'll get to you second, Irene. Yeah, I'm Andrew Marticich, and I represent San Pedro Homeowners United, and I'm happy to see that item number 39 was taken off the agenda because it really isn't needed. It had to do with the tidelines. And my presentation goes to, why is it with billions of dollars in port expansion, not $1 has been spent on any project-specific mitigation in San Pedro or Wilmington off of port lands? At the last California State's Lands Commission meeting, state land staff had stated that EIR project-specific mitigation under California's Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, is allowable off of port lands. Through the San Pedro Homeowners United SEQA lawsuit, we have made a $20 million gift of state funds available to the citizens of Los Angeles for aesthetic mitigations on and off of port lands for past negative impacts. So councilmen, I wish you'd listen to this because we gave to the taxpayers $20 million of state money for use to mitigate negative impacts on LA city property with no cost to the taxpayer. As the mayor has backed off of his commitment to reevaluate past DIRs to determine the required nexus of project-specific mitigation, there is now the need to revise the settlement language. The solution is simple: follow the legislative intent of SEQA, document the negative impacts, and mitigate with state funds off of port lands for the benefit of Los Angeles city taxpayers. San Pedro Homeowners United, as a litigant in principle in this case, for the benefit of the taxpayers of the City of Los Angeles, is willing to work with the city council to develop revised settlement language wherein the $20 million will be directed to new project-specific mitigation off of port lands. That's off of port lands, on city property. At this time, we are working with state lands on this issue and would like to work with the city council on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Irene Casmer?
I'm Irene Casmer. I'm honored to be in front of you, all the Los Angeles council, whoever is here, especially His Honor Garcetti and Labange and Ms. Hahn, and I see Ms. Perry and Parks and Reyes, and I thought I saw Mr. Villarogosa, too. I am here in front of you. I thought it's an easier way than going to each council member's office. I delivered a small package. It's very important to the development of the museum that I have been working on 25 years. I've been working in the fashion industry over 50 years, employed lots of people, and I have never come across, I don't want to mention the names, but would you, could I have the privilege to ask you to all read what I have delivered today? And please, anything else you want to know about this package, would you be so kind to call me? I am ready to bring proof. Deliver anything you want that I say in these letters. I am very, very sorry because, as I say, 50 or 55 years since I'm 17 years old in this industry, when you ask me where I'm born, I say downtown, because that's what I was most of my time, but I have never come across somebody to try to smear such a wonderful industry, and so much employment being created by that industry, and so much, everybody derives lots of benefits from this industry to be strong. So thank you very much for listening to me, and I hope you all read it and get in touch with me. Thank you. Irene Casmer, I thank you, and the Museum of Fashion Designer thanks you, and the whole fashion industry, because this letter will go to the whole fashion industry, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Casmer, for your testimony.
Thanks for listening to me.
That closes public comment. We do have two closed-session items, though, 78 and 80, and we have two public speaker cards.
I did put in a card.
That's exactly what I'm going to get to, Ms. Hawkins, right now. We have 78 and 80, and we have two public speaker cards, even though those are closed-session items. So at this time, I'd like to take them up. And Ms. Hawkins, if you'd like to address us on item 78 and 80, the microphone is yours.
Excuse me, I don't think that is funny. For my first comment, you did not give me five minutes. You're talking about one second?
No, no, there's three, you have three minutes, ma'am.
No, no, you didn't, it's five minutes.
So you have the microphone for a combined six minutes now, if you'd like.
I don't think it's funny, Eric. Now, I wish you act a little bit intelligent. I'm an ugly girl for you to play with.
Ms. Hawkins, for item 78 and 80, right now you have three minutes on each one, so please, the microphone is yours.
Okay, from the public point of view, I don't think what you did on television is going to go through either. With the police department, it's been canceled. You wait three more years for that. It still will not come through. And you know who I am, Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, and y'all can't fake my death. I give all information, which is Jan Heim.
I know it can be confusing, the public time clock, we have it 10 minutes, it's set that way for all the speakers, but on item 78 and 80, if you'd like to address us at all anymore, Ms. Hawkins?
The President of the United States is watching you. FBI is watching this city hall.
You want 78 and 80?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
You know who I am.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony, Ms. Hawkins. That closes public comment on items 78 and 80. If we can take those items up, guards, if we can please go into closed session now, that will be before us. And we'll reopen for open session after we deliberate on those two items. Thank you very much. Welcome back to the Los Angeles City Council, ladies and gentlemen. We had two items in closed session. Do we need to vote on either of those, Madam Clerk?
Item number 78 is a settlement, and it's a Workers' Compensation Appeals Board Claim, and the amount is $125,005.
Okay. That item is before us. If we can please open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That settlement is approved. If we can continue, Mr. Parks has asked us to continue item 25 till Friday without objection, colleagues. Item 25 will be continued till Friday. And we've had a motion to reconsider item 77 by Mr. Labange. If we can, anybody wishing to be heard on that? Just, okay, we'll just vote on the reconsideration first, Mr. Labange. If we can open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that item is back before us. Mr. Labange?
Thank you. I apologize, members. I miscalled on this special, but as you know, many of you signed this resolution. With Thanksgiving Day coming up soon, we'd ask through this passage of this that we call on all residents of Los Angeles during the Thanksgiving Day weekend to salute the firefighters throughout this city and wherever they may be in their travels. The firefighters between October, late October into November, were battling blazes throughout Southern California, and our own Los Angeles firefighters, from the central city, from the west side, from the south side, from the valley, from Hollywood throughout, served the region and did an absolutely wonderful job. And I just think Thanksgiving is one of the greatest holidays of the year, and we could continue to make it even greater by that Saturday of asking all residents of the city to find their way by a fire station, or if they see them in the community, to honk and wave and thank the hand of a firefighter, because it's the minimum women of our fire departments that are there always when the bell rings. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Councilmember Labange, our junior firefighter here at the city council. I would also encourage, when you go visit the firefighters at the station, bring them some cookies, bring them a cake, bring them something, because they all eat at that station, they live at the station, and they enjoy when people stop by. Any kind of desserts, they really enjoy. So it's a great idea. We need to show our appreciation and thanks. I know Councilmember Hahn makes a great pumpkin pie, and that'll be nice to deliver to fire stations, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. If we can please open the roll on item 77. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you very much. That item is approved, colleagues. I understand we have a special item that is being circulated. Would it be in order to move on with the rest of the business in the meantime?
Council does have motions for posting and referral.
Okay, let's post and refer those.
And there is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, November 14th, to arrive at 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
Okay, Mr. Labange moves, Ms. Hahn seconds, and Mr. Cardenas is excused.
And that clears the desk. We're just waiting for special one.
While we're waiting for the special motion, colleagues, do we have any announcements today? Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Zine?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to acknowledge yesterday Veterans Day, and there were ceremonies at Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills. Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Labange, I was there along with some other elected officials, and I just wanted to remind our viewers and the people of Los Angeles to keep the veterans in their prayers and their thoughts. It was an inspirational day yesterday at Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills. We still have a number of our military troops that are being deployed, a number of reserves being called up, and while we think of them, remember them, yesterday, we want to keep in our prayers and thoughts every single day. And it was the 44th Annual Veterans Day Ceremony at Forest Lawn, and there were another number of other activities. I know Councilmember Cardenas had an event last night at the Browdy Center, a candlelight vigil, but we need to keep them in our prayers and thoughts, especially during this time of the year when many of us will be celebrating the holidays, and our military troops are overseas protecting our freedoms and liberties. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that. Even though it was one day yesterday, we want to continue the thoughts and the prayers for our military personnel. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes and then Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you, Council President. Yesterday, we had a great event in Cypress Park. Many of the veterans from Cypress Park, northeast part of Los Angeles, were being acknowledged, recognized, their family members. What I wanted to mention, though, is the message that was being given by the veterans and how many of our young people who will get involved with gangs and get killed, and they get involved with all these, the ugliness of that whole culture, how many of the young people have given their lives for this country, and how fighting over territory and gang names just makes no sense. And the message was pretty profound from those who actually were fighting for our country throughout the years, especially those from Vietnam.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, thank you very much, Councilman Zine, for acknowledging the event that we had at the Browdy Center in Van Nuys. Last night, we had a candlelight vigil to honor our veterans, the people who have sacrificed their lives over the many generations to protect our freedoms and our democracy. Yet at the same time, we took time to recognize individuals such as Gabriela Mojica, whose husband Jesse Mojica is actually a police officer, who's over there right now, fighting as we speak, and she recounted what her family goes through and the price that they are willing to pay. And that's the most important part about what we heard testimony from the men and women who spoke yesterday, was the fact that they accept these sacrifices. And although it's very painful sometimes when the phone rings, not knowing what it's going to be, when their loved ones are overseas protecting those things that we value, I thought it was very important for us to recognize those individuals, who, not only those of the past, but those who are actively defending us today. So thank you so much for your participation as well in your event.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two announcements. Eighth District on Saturday, November the 15th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Eighth District in conjunction with Department of Aging is hosting an seniors resource fair at the Epic Center, 3990 Menlo. We will have a variety of city services from the Handi Worker Program, senior crime prevention, the Home Secure, LA County Services, LA Fire Department. So there's a variety of services for Eighth District and Department of Aging Resource Fair. Also, for this evening and tomorrow, we have a citywide program on cash money for college students at the convention center. It is citywide. We're going to have two locations in the Eighth District that will pick up students that are interested in applying. At the Rita Walters Center from 6:00 p.m., where they'll be departing, they'll return at 9:00. The Rita Walters Center is 915 Manchester. Also, at the St. Andrews Rec Center, 8701 South St. Andrews, they'll pick up at 5:30 and return at 9:00.
Thank you very much. And I was at the opening this morning of the Free Cash for College Fair, which is now the largest college scholarship fair in the country, colleagues. And today and tomorrow, please encourage young people in your district to attend that convention, and obviously, there's events throughout the city to get our young people enrolled in college. Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to highlight, we did something actually this last Saturday, which was a car seat giveaway and installation by LAPD and CHP. And we were able to, through donations, work through the Valley Community Clinic. But people who are watching today, I heard statistics that as a new mom, it made me reflect back, which is 90% of car seats are installed improperly. 90%. And that the number-one death of kids could be stopped by having a car seat that is installed properly. And so I just would encourage everyone to visit your CHP and LAPD to get your car seats installed by them and save your child's life. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, colleagues? Just two others for myself. I want to thank the Filipino veterans who came out yesterday in historic Filipino town. Looks like they will have a bill that will finally give most of them health care this year that was anticipated to be signed by the president yesterday, but probably by That was anticipated to be signed by the president yesterday, but probably by Thanksgiving. And we wanted to thank them for their sacrifices. The grandson of a veteran who fought in the Philippines in World War II, I particularly wanted to thank them. Secondly, Hispanic Heritage Night is going to be happening at the Church of the Nations at 3063 Los Feliz Boulevard on Saturday, November 15th, at 7:00 p.m. with mariachi, cumbia, Latin rock, Mexican food, and we encourage folks to come at 7:00 p.m. Everything is free, November 15th. That's 3063 Los Feliz Boulevard, Church of the Nations for Hispanic Heritage Month. Okay, colleagues, now is time for adjourning motions. If I can please ask everybody to rise. Mr. Labange.
Members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Art Carney, who was a tremendous actor, who won an Oscar for Harry Entono. And what was so beautiful about that movie, many things of Art Carney that he did, it enlightened a lot of, because I remember, the seniors of our country. And here was a fellow with his cat who drove across the country on a travel, and it was a beautiful film. But also, really, in The Honeymooners, where he starred with Jackie Gleason, it was, it epitomized what television was in the 50s, which just was a new medium at the time, and his relationship with Jackie Gleason as Ralph Kramlin, the bus driver, and Ed Norton, the sewer worker. And he belonged, as they said in the obituaries, to many honorary roles throughout the country, to various organizations of the workers who keep the sewers clean. I think Art Carney was a fabulous actor and who lived a nice, long life, and I ask that we adjourn in his memory. And also, Mr. President, I think we should adjourn in memory of Bobby Hatfield. Bobby Hatfield was with the Righteous Brothers, who, great medley, Bill Medley, excuse me, and a great team of singers, who were really the big hits of the 60s. I remember on KHJ hearing, you know, "You Lost That Lovin' Feeling" right on the way, and "Just Beautiful Soul." And it was a comment by someone in the audience who said, "Hey, man, that's Righteous Brothers," to those guys that they got the name. They had some other name. Although born outside California, Bobby Hatfield was raised here in Orange County, and I think it's a great part of our heritage of music of people. And I saw that he had a wonderful service yesterday, and ask that we adjourn in his memory, Bobby Hatfield, famed of the Righteous Brothers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Any other adjourning motions? Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Al Esses passed away October 30th. Al Esses, a resident of Woodland Hills for the past 32 years, died at the age of 83 after a courageous four-and-a-half-year battle with cancer. Al was born in Brooklyn, New York, and served his country in World War II. Al, a hard-working business owner of Esses Home Shop, was in the retail linen business for 60 years, was a devoted husband to Gloria for 47 years. He was concerned and involved and community member, and was loved and respected by all who knew him. He will be greatly missed. He is survived by his wife Gloria, and his daughter Gail, and his son Mark. May Al Esses rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, find that lovin' feeling today and have a good afternoon. Please call the roll.[1755.78]